Good afternoon. Officially called to order the study session, Coachella Valley Water District Board of Directors on March 29, 2022 here in Palm Desert, I'd like to make clear for the record that this meeting is being conducted as permitted under AB 361 and Board Resolution 2022-10. Today's meeting is presented in a hybrid format, in person here at our administration building and via Zoom. AB 361 suspends certain requirements of the Brown Act, allowing board members to participate in person or by video conference. The public may view this meeting online or participate in person. Meeting's being streamed on our YouTube channel, may join via Zoom. Didn't we just say that? I guess not. And Zoom details are listed on the agenda. You can make public comment either in person or via Zoom. If we have anyone wishing to make public comment, please use the raise hand features so that we can see that you're there. I'll now call on, and then we will have, we do have at least one director participating remotely, so even though there won't be any action taken at this meeting, we'll make sure to include their participation by calling on them directly. And I think we're good then. Carrie, go ahead with, we have one item of study, right?
Yes.
Oh, roll call. Oh, and we're gonna do the pledge too. This other page, sorry. Why don't we do the, why are we supposed to do the pledge and then the roll call? Let's do the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now roll call.
Good afternoon. President Powell.
Here.
Vice President Estrada.
Here.
Director Bianco.
Here.
Director Aguilar is absent today, and Director Nelson will be joining us shortly.
Okay, good. Thank you.
He's here.
Oh, he is here.
Here.
Good. Good. And do we have anyone wishing to make public comment this time? Hearing none. Carrie, go ahead with our one item of study. Thanks.
Okay. Can I, oops. Can I move the slides along with this? Okay. Okay, so, good afternoon, President Powell, members of the board, thanks for being here to talk about the FY23 capital improvement plan. Before I get started, I just wanted to let you know, we handed out a hard copy here of the presentation. There were eight slides that changed. Yesterday, we noticed that the Oasis in the Recharge Phase Two project was improperly budgeted, and so it actually reduced the overall budget by $8 million. So, the PowerPoint will reflect that as we go through, but just in case you had other numbers in your head, that's what's going on.
What project was that, Carrie?
The Oasis in Liu Recharge Phase Two in East replenishment. It, it, the FY23 budget amount went from 13.5 million to 5.5 million. So, it reduced the overall budget from 189 million to 181 million. We're going in the right direction. Okay. So, just a brief introduction, I'm going to provide an overview of this year's proposed capital improvement budget, or the FY23 against the FY22 budget, the one we're in today. And then, we're gonna look at each fund, and we'll look at the projects we completed in FY22, what our projected execution rates are, and the proposed projects for FY23, and the budgets, and how they're being proposed to be financed. And then, at the end of the CIP discussion, Finance will give a brief overview of how each fund is performing, and if there's any rate increases needed. So, I'm happy to go as fast or slow as you need to go through all of these slides, just let me know if you want me to stop, or answer any questions along the way. Otherwise, I'm gonna just kinda keep, keep moving. Okay, so this slide is our, is our overall slide showing the funding sources for the FY23 capital improvement budget. So, just, you know, briefly, 40% of the budget is pay-go funds at 72 million. 56% of the budget is grants, loans, and bonds at 103 million. And then, our restricted reserves represent 4% of the budget at 7 million. And as I said earlier, the overall budget is 181 million proposed for FY23. Okay. Any questions there? No? Okay, so then...
I have, I have...
Sure?
Carrie, I have a quick question. That's a lot. And I, I was trying to figure out when to best bring this up, but since you're kind of describing the pie chart here of where the funding's coming from, is, is there anywhere in the presentation where you perhaps touch on the, on any, is there any project here that's using non-rate revenue in the form of perhaps the capacity, the capacity charges?
Yeah, there are, there are specific projects in the domestic and sanitation funds that we'll, we can talk about when we get to those specific funds.
And, and the pie chart, what, is that not, is that a category, or no?
It's the restricted reserves. It's the last column. It's the 6.759 million number. It's the, the yellow.
Okay, the 3%?
Three, there's a 3% and a 1%.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so this slide, I know it's a lot of information, I'll just walk through it briefly, but this shows the comparison between the FY22 budget and the FY23 budget. So, column two was the FY22 approved budget in June at 165 million. And then, as we've gone through the year, we have actually reduced our FY22 budget, we've amended it by approximately 26 million due to projects just not starting as soon as we anticipated due to insurance issues or due to supply chain issues. So, when you look at the 181 million in comparison to, to the, the fourth column there, which was what we had previously proposed for our FY23 budget when we were in FY22, the difference is basically the 26 or the 27 million that we've reduced the budget by this year, if that makes sense.
Carrie, I have a question for you.
Sure.
Didn't we approve a five-year CIP?
No, we present a five-year CIP, but you only approve one year.
Okay.
At a time.
Okay. So, where it shows previously proposed?
Yes.
Okay. In that five-year CIP that we saw last year?
Yes.
Was that number 154 million?
Yes, yes. So, if you look at...
You're sure? I don't remember it being that high.
Okay. Yeah, that, that was what was approved in June when you approved our FY22 budget. So, basically, what we're trying to show here is that there is an increase compared to what we presented, but that increase is offset by the amendments that we've made this year to the budget, because, and it's really just a rebalancing of the funds, because it's mostly the two stormwater projects and the Oasis in Liu Recharge project.
It's just a rollover.
It's just a rollover, right.
So, if I could summarize that, the budget for this year capital improvement budget decreased by $26 million, which is rolled over to fiscal year '23 to a $154 million budget, which would be 180 million. So, we have just a slight increase of $1 million on top of the rollover.
Correct. Yes.
Okay.
And, yes. And I can go through, well, I can, I can, well, you can see, you know, domestic and sanitation remained relatively the same, they increased by a million. Canal increased, and I'll get into that a little later, but that was because we had an opportunity to add some projects there, because we were, we are applying for loans for those projects. East increased slightly, but that's just rebalancing the funds for Oasis. And Stormwater obviously increased because we're rolling over the funds for the two stormwater, large stormwater projects. West decreased, we didn't, we didn't get to start the construction of the Palm Desert replenishment facility as we had thought. And then, we already talked about sanitation. So, this, I know it's a lot of information, but just trying to put it in perspective, where this 881 million is coming from, it's really not any new projects, but it's just continuing to fund those three large projects that are carryovers. Okay, so...
Jim, in the West replenishment, the Governor's Executive Order tasked the Regional Water Quality Control Board to, to expedite water recharge projects moving forward. Is it kind of a little too soon to make an analysis of whether that will enable the West replenishment to get the Phase Two project off and going in '23?
Yes, sir, it is. As we discussed, I think last time we brought that project forward, the Regional Water Quality Control Board does have action, and we're awaiting their actions. So, the government's, the Governor's Executive Order may help that if they're paying attention.
Well, let's hope they're paying attention. Thanks.
If not, we can always help them.
Yeah, send them a copy of the order and highlight the, I think it's number 12.
Okay. So, if there aren't any more questions on that, we're gonna get into the individual funds. And the first fund we are going to talk about is Motor Pool, and Stuart Taylor is here to cover these two slides.
Thank you, Carrie. As you mentioned, we only have two slides that we will address today. The first is the five-year capital improvement plan. We committed to the board back in 2018 that we would keep the capital improvement budget to around $2.5 million per year, and this is the evidence that we have executed on that plan, and will continue to do so. Wherever we can find opportunity for additional savings, we will explore that as we move forward. As an example, the $88,000 that you see that we trimmed additionally out of FY22, '23 was the opportunity to eliminate two trucks and replace it with one smaller truck, so we realized a little bit of additional savings. So, since 2018, we've reduced the CIP by $6,190,000. The next slide is the FY23 capital improvement budget, and there are two main things we would like to point out. On the top half of the screen where it's blue, these are the vehicles that we have to rebudget due to the obvious supply chain issues. We put in the purchase orders for the first five vehicles back in September, and we still don't have a production date from Ford on those yet, and they can't seem to provide concrete evidence of when that may happen. Once they have those production dates, it's usually an additional 60 to 90 days, so I suspect that those would be sometime in August. And then, the seven heavy-duty trucks that we are purchasing for the approved technical infeasibility certification requests that the South Coast approved, those are projected over a year out at this point, but we had to get those in a purchase order agreement so that we could take advantage of the approvals from South Coast, as well as get into the queue for Kenworth, as they were, they've eliminated over 3,000 orders, so if we don't get in a queue, we're never gonna get a truck. So, that total rebudgeted CIB is $1,689,842. And to the additional CIB for this year, we selected the highest cost half-ton pickup since we had delayed those for two, over two years. We had a couple that were totaled, so we're gonna replace those, and then we added the highest cost, highest mileage remaining of those vehicles to equal $659,430. And so, with the rebudgeted contingency, as well as the FY23 capital and contingency, we're at $2,488, and we anticipate about $319,000 if we get vehicles and can get the old ones off to auction. We are getting fairly good money for auction vehicles at this point. And just on that note, the auction proceeds for year-to-date FY22 is at $188,000. We continue to do well even with regard for part supply issues and things of keeping our current fleet on the road. We're at about 94% fleet availability, which I think is remarkable with the supply chain issues. So, with that, I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Nope. Okay, thanks, Stuart.
Thanks, sir.
All right, so, the next fund we're gonna get into is the General District Fund. Just briefly, we completed two projects within this fund this year, the Coachella Campus Water Supply and Fire Protection System Phase Two, and the demolition of the Blue Water Tower. And the execution rate is proposed at 89%. This is the budget for FY23, we're proposing 6.3 million. General District projects are funded by all of the funds, since they benefit the whole district, so this is the breakdown of what each fund contributes to, to the projects in, in General District. So, again, this is, there's five ongoing projects, those are the ones in bold, and three new projects for this fiscal year. There's additional slides. The majority of the funds to pay for these projects are pay-go. There are two projects that will receive grant funding in the amount of $270,000, so the Salt Nutrient Management Plan monitoring wells, and then Demonstration Garden in Palm Desert receive grant funding. These next few slides just go over the, the projects that aren't in bold, the ones that aren't ongoing. There's a Palm Desert upgrade to the transfer switch and power distribution. This is to help with the Palm Desert Operations Building. There's a operations parking lot rehab Phase Two. This project was planned earlier, a couple of years ago, but then we had the installation of the solar project and the carports, so we wanted to wait to finish up the paving once those were installed. And then, we have the ERP. We're continuing with developing the RFP this, this fiscal year, or this next fiscal year. Any questions on General District? Okay, moving right along, we'll move into domestic water. So, in FY22, we completed eight projects. The overall, or the projected execution rate is 91%, so there were a couple of large reservoirs we completed, some designs, the first phase of the Avenue 66 Transmission Main, and purchased and installed an emergency standby generator at one of the wells in Here is how the domestic water...
Carrie?
Yeah?
Carrie, I have a question.
Sure.
If you'd go back one slide.
Yep.
So, on this projected CIP execution rate, is this before or after we've rolled over that $26 million into next year?
This is before. This is the, the, oh, this is based on the amended FY22 budget, the 139 million.
So, after we've taken out?
Yes.
The $26 million of projects and moved them to next year? Okay, thank you.
Right, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Oops. So, this is the summary of the funding sources. We have, it's, the domestic water is proposed at 34 million, and 78% of the projects are proposed to be funded with loans and grants. Only 5% is budgeted using pay-go funds. And then, this next slide shows all of the projects, there's 17 projects total, and there's more detail, go in, so, there's four that are being funded using the restricted funds, the water system backup facility charge. There are four being funded using the pay-as-you-go or pay-go funds, and we'll go into a little more detail about these in the next slides. We have a, the existing Highway 86 Transmission Main, there's a portion of that pipeline that crosses, crosses a wash and is supported by those, these concrete supports, and during one of the storms, one of them was washed away. So, this project is, is to repair that pipe, the pipe supports. And then, we have our chromium 6 treatment, full-scale stennis chloride. The idea behind this is to work with the Division of Drinking Water to get a permit amendment to allow us to add stennis chloride to the water system in Desert Hot Springs, our ID8 system, and then implement a full-scale treatment to reduce chromium 6. And then, we have our hygienomatic search tank replacement program. We like to try to do one or two of these replacements a year, and just continue to work through our list of deteriorating tanks.
So, so where it says at the bottom on all of these, it says, so you're only budgeting on this, on this project 200,000 for next year?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so, that goes for all of these?
Right. We're trying to give you an idea of what the project estimate is, and then what part we're funding next year.
Okay.
So, you, so you know the whole picture.
Okay.
Okay. Then we have our grant and loan projects that are in process, and we have more description about these in the following slides. So, we have three booster stations that are located in the East Valley that serve Mecca and North Shore, and we're working on a loan with USDA for those. We have a reservoir in North Shore, we're also working on a loan from USDA for that project. We have our IXTPs, this is our ion exchange treatment plant at well 7991 in Mecca, and we're gonna be replacing the treatment system out there. The well works fine, it's just we can't use it until there's, the treatment is replaced. And this is the project where we're working on securing the ARPA funds from the county. We have our Adams Street Water Main Replacement Project. This is in North Indio, it's a backbone pipeline that takes water from the reservoir north of Sun City and carries it through and distributes it in the North Indio area. We're looking at potential bond financing for this project. Then we have our Valley View Consolidation Project. We have secured some grant funding for the initial design. This is our second-ranked project from our Eastern Coachella Valley Water Supply Master Plan Project, so we're starting to initiate the design on that project next year.
Could you go back, could you go back two pages?
Sure.
That, that Adams Street Water Main Replacement, yeah.
Yep.
Is this, is this somewhat similar, is it corroded somewhat similar to Sun City in terms of, I mean, that's a fairly new pipeline, I would imagine.
It is, and it has had, it, it is corroded, and it, and we, I think, provided you with a sample.
Yeah.
Last year, that big pipe that was sitting out by the, the entrance to the boardroom, that was from this pipeline.
Great, thank you.
Okay. So, Valley View, and then we have, we're, we currently have a, a planning grant that we're working on. We're doing the preliminary alignment and initial design to extend the Highway 86 Transmission Main, pick it up from where we left it off at Avenue 86, and carry it down into Salt and City to where our reservoirs are located. And then, we have our Avenue 66 Transmission Main, which I think you've all heard a lot about, and we're gonna be going up to the State Water Board meeting in April to ask for a $23 million grant from them for this project. So, that completes the, the domestic water fund section. Are there any questions? No? Okay. Moving along to Canal then.
So, actually, there's not one, one project in that domestic water that hasn't been started?
There is one project that has been started.
I mean, all of them show money spent in '22.
Oh, monies, okay, so there's, there's, there, yes, there are ongoing designs, and then we have one reservoir that's under construction that is being carried over, and we have one well that's under construction that's being carried over. We have two reservoirs that were completed this year, we have them in the budget for next year, because in one year, we have to do a warranty inspection. And then, most of these other projects, though, they're, either the design is, is being wrapped up, and the construction is starting next year, or we're continuing the design. Okay? Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so, in the Canal Fund, we completed the check structure at my Oppost 88.6 project. The projected execution rate is 90%. So, in the Canal Fund, this is mostly, it's always been pay-go funds, however, in January, we applied for approximately $45 million in loan funding from the USBR as part of the bipartisan infrastructure law program. And that, that is to fund, if we are successful at getting the loan, or some of it, it would fund 11 projects over the next five to 10 years. We've budgeted two of those projects this year, that's the 4.75 million. If we don't get the loan, though, we will pull those out and we won't do those projects. So, we're not proposing to substitute them with, with pay-go funds, just to be clear. So, these are the projects, there are seven projects proposed, there's one ongoing in construction, and there's a, I'll get into more detail on each of these projects in the next slides. So, the ongoing project is the Alphor Pump Station Relocation, which is located near Silver Rock Golf Course in La Quinta. And then, we have the Mid Canal Storage Project, where we're contributing 26%, and we're currently finishing the design and the environmental on that project, and we're hoping we'll be able to initiate construction, so we've budgeted a little bit of money for construction next year. We have the Johnson Street Drain Improvement Project, and then we have the Irrigation Lateral 119.64 SM5 Replacement Project, Phase One. That project, we also applied for a loan, but that one was already included in the five-year plan last year, so if we don't get the loan for that project, that one, we do want to continue with using pay-go funds, so that's why we've budgeted under pay-go. And then, there's two projects, the Mid Canal Storage Project, which has a cost-share component to it, 74% would... 74% would be by others. And then there's the CCLP San Andreas Oasis Pipeline Project, and that would be fully reimbursed by San Diego County Water Authority.
What does the CCLP stand for?
Oh, Coachella Canal Lining Project, right? Yes. So it's a mitigation project as a result of that project. And I'll have a slide on it, I can go into a little more detail.
Okay.
So this is the Mid Canal Storage Project.
Carrie?
Yes?
And maybe this is a question for Jim, but does San Diego have first dibs on these type of projects, on lining the canal?
No, they don't have first dibs, but it is a cost-sharing as part of the whole QSA wrap-up. They provided money to do the canal lining, and they get a certain amount of water in exchange for paying for the lining. And then as the lining needs to be repaired, and I think Dan Charlton works through with San Diego, how to get that into the budget, what they're going to pay for, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So the Mid Canal Storage Project, we've brought that to you for action this year. We entered into an agreement with San Diego County Water Authority and the San Luis Rey River Indian Water Authority to fund the design and environmental of this project. So that's what we're currently working on. And then here's the CCLP San Andreas Oasis Pipeline Project, which is a project that San Diego County Water Authority is going to be reimbursing us for. It's a turnout at the Coachella Canal along with about 10,000 feet of 6-inch PVC pipe. And then we have the Johnson Street Drain Improvement Project. We have this irrigation lateral project, which is located on Avenue 58 between Harrison and Jackson.
Let me just ask you a question.
Sure.
The Oasis.
Yes.
San Andreas. So we're going to supply water to an area for desert habitat?
Yes. It's a mitigation...
And that's, and that is because of the Canal Storage Project?
No. No, this is part of the Coachella Canal Lining Project from many years ago. There's environmental mitigation associated with that project. So there's these little sub-projects that came out of the larger project.
So the idea is basically because you've lined the canal, there's no more seepage. And so they have to provide mitigation water in various places for those environmental impacts.
But the canal wasn't been there forever?
But the lining has been, it was added by San Diego. And in order to get the lining in so they could then get the water, they had to provide environmental water to replace what would have leaked.
But that water hasn't been there for millions of years. It's just water that was brought in, so...
For 50 years.
It's only been there for 50 years. So whatever that water created...
Right, but...
It was not natural.
I'll defer to the environmental...
I know, I'm just sorry, it just drives me crazy.
You're right. And so specifically, this project replaces our requirement to meet desert riparian expansion because they felt that the desert riparian area that formed as a result of the seepage would be decimated by our canal lining project. So to replace that, we had to install thousands of desert riparian trees. We attempted to do that twice unsuccessfully. So now we've negotiated with the wildlife agencies, and they said, okay, if you do this instead, we'll call that your desert riparian project. So we've been through quite a few alternatives, and this was the best solution.
How much water is that going to take?
Oh. It's not a lot. It's...
Is it like 3,000 to 4,000?
Much less, much less than that.
3,000, 4,000?
Yeah. We're only using 2,950 acre-feet for all the projects that we're doing at Dos Palmas. This is just one of the projects. So it's probably less than 100 acre-feet for the San Andreas Oasis.
So this is something that's been done, was done a long time ago, it's just we're getting to put it in? Is that...
Oh, yeah.
This is the replacement project for something we tried to do
Yeah.
that didn't work.
A long time ago.
Desert riparian, yeah.
Well, it was part of the 2003, I guess it was a supplemental agreement, but still negotiated around the same time as the QSA, as I recall.
There's about two dozen obligations we had for, this has been going on for a long time.
Two thousand...
Two dozen different types of... We had to create a 17-acre marsh. I mean, we're checking them off, and this is one of the last...
Okay. Just so I know where this is coming from, okay?
But overall, the mitigation water for this type of work, what would you say the total was?
2,950 acre-feet per year.
So about 3,000 acre-feet.
And we've hit that two of the last three years.
So if we trigger a drought contingency plan, when does that kick in, when we stop delivering that water?
Probably never.
Yeah, it'll depend on whether there are specific requirements where we can actually make cuts to environmental water. Sometimes there is, like in the governor's drought mandate. There are some times where you can reduce water use to the environment.
Okay. Can you move on? Because I know President Powell has a time limit here.
Yeah, and I'll be able to leave, and you guys can continue without me.
Okay. All right. So there's the Johnson Street Drain, there's the Irrigation Lateral. There's a Phase 1 and a Phase 2. And then there's a couple of division box replacements that we're proposing along Avenue 59. So that's it for Canal. Are there any other questions on Canal? No? Okay, then we have our East Replenishment. We have the ongoing project, the Oasis In-Lu Recharge Phase 2. And we have a Madison Club Avenue 54 connection. We're providing a nonplodable water connection. So the projected execution rate is 85% for this fund. And this is mostly funded through the bond financing for the Oasis In-Lu Recharge Project. The only new project that we've added to this fund is a nonplodable water connection to the Quarry Country Club. And so we'll be working on the planning and design of that next year. So that is it for East Replenishment, unless there's any questions?
I have a question on the Irrigation Lateral.
Oh, sorry.
Replacement boxes.
Okay.
So this is, we're going to replace two boxes, two of those boxes.
Yes.
And so I'm assuming for $4.7 million, it's got to be a lot bigger than this picture. Because you're saying you have two of these boxes that you're going to replace at a cost of $4.7 million?
Five million.
Yeah, five million?
Yeah.
That doesn't seem...
David, do you want to add the magnitude of these boxes?
All right, good afternoon. Yes, the boxes are, I don't have the dimensions with me, but there are two, and they're roughly 15 feet tall. But it also involves the relocation of, and I don't have the footage, of a 72-inch pipeline, at least in this case, because we cannot take the line down while we're building it. We have to build it as an offset, and we have to create a diversion alignment for the pipeline for each of those locations. So not only does it involve the structural work for the boxes themselves, or the build for the boxes themselves, it requires a new pipeline alignment to align up with those new boxes and a demo of the existing boxes and pipeline. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I get your point on this one.
It's a workaround. I mean, in order to keep the line and the service available while we make the repair, we have to essentially build a secondary system.
And this is one of the projects where we've applied for the loan funding.
And the cost is not just the boxes, it's anticipated inspection, consultant support during construction, soil support, and all that as well.
The designs are complete. These are projects that we completed the designs last year, but we had to shelve them because there weren't enough funds to proceed with the construction this year.
Okay. I mean, it just seems crazy. There must be a lot of work in diverting and redoing it. Five million dollars. So it must be more than what you're advertising here. So, and obviously, you just told me, yeah.
Probably not the best.
You just told me, okay?
All right.
Okay.
Were there any questions on East? Anybody? No? Okay. We will move on to stormwater. So we completed the North Indio Demolition Project in anticipation of the larger North Indio Regional Flood Control System Phase 2 project. And so we commenced that. We also commenced our Coachella Valley Stormwater Channel Improvements from Avenue 54 to the Thermal Drop Structure. And we started the East Side Dyke Improvement Project, which is almost, should be really close to being complete by the end of this fiscal year. So the projected CIP execution rate is 90% for this fund. This fund has a few sources of financing. There's a small grant for our East Side Dyke Project. There's the WIFI loan, and then there's PEGO and bond financing. The total is $81 million. But as you can see, the top two projects make up $75 million of the $81 million. So we have the pay-as-you-go projects. Again, a portion of the Coachella Valley Improvement Project and the North Indio Project and the East Side Dyke Project are being funded using PEGO. And then there's a list of eight other projects that are being proposed to be funded using the PEGO. So for a total of $30 million. And then we have our the WIFI loan for the top two projects and bond financing. And then the East Side Dyke is a 75% grant. So grant, loan, and bond financing make up $50 million of the budget. And then if you, then there's just several slides here on the projects. If I can just go through those, if you don't have any questions on the financing? Okay?
Okay.
So we have our Whitewater River Channel Bank Protection. This is adjacent to Warp 10. This is the project that we will construct in conjunction with the Palm Desert Groundwater Replenishment Facility Phase 2. We have our Thousand Palms Flood Control Project. We're wrapping up the design and environmental. And so we're hoping to start on right-of-way acquisition next year for at least a portion of the project. We have the North Cathedral City Stormwater Master Plan, again, wrapping up design and environmental. And there's some land that we need to acquire, so we're hoping to start that next year. We have been working on the design of this East Side Dyke re-alignment between Waste Way Number 3 and Dillon Road, North Indio area. So that one is estimated to, or projected to go into construction. And we have another project, another East Side Dyke Improvement Project Phase 2 from Interstate 10 to North Shore. We're working on the design. And we have a continuation of our installation of rainfall gauges. We're proposing to install five next year. So that wraps up the stormwater section. Any questions on any of those projects? Okay. We'll move right along then to West Replenishment. So the one project, we completed a small automated delivery for the Palm Desert Groundwater Replenishment Phase 1 Facility to help operations so that they don't have to manually keep track of the levels in the ponds. And so the projected execution rate for this fund is 81%. The main project in this fund is the Palm Desert Groundwater Replenishment Facility Phase 2. So we're hoping to get started on construction on this project next in FY '23. So that is it for West Replenishment. And then we have sanitation. Any questions? It's our last fund. So we're reasoning right along? Okay. So in sanitation, we completed nine projects. The projected execution rate is 85%. This has a mix of funding sources, PEGO, grants, loans, and the restricted reserves, the fees that we collect from development, the SEC, sanitation capacity charge. So the total budget for this project, or this fund, is $41 million. And we have two slides to describe the project and the budgets. This slide shows the 22 sanitation-related projects for the treatment component at the warps and then the collection side. And then we have the slide that represents the nonplodable water-related projects. So there's 24 nonplodable water projects proposed, and there's five that are currently ongoing in construction. And then we have the pay-as-you-go funds. So there's a lot of partial funding using pay-as-you-go. So obviously, I'm not going to go through all of these, but the total budget for the pay-as-you-go funds is about $18.6 million. And then we have our sanitation capacity charge, treatment and collection projects. That's the restricted funds. And again, they're partially paying for some of the improvements at the treatment plants and some of the upgrades to the collection system, the lift stations. And then we have all the grant and loan projects. Mostly, they are the nonplodable water-related projects. However, we have the last four there on the list, Pier Street, Trunk Sewer, Monroe Street, Trunk Sewer, Avenue 66, Trunk Sewer, and Valley View, Trunk Sewer. Those are all projects in the East Valley that are 100%, and we're working on getting 100% grant funding for. So then these next few slides, or several slides, just describe the projects that are being funded using the PEGO funds. So we have the Warp 4 Phase 1 Improvements. This is to finish the design of the proposed tertiary treatment system at Warp 4. We have, we are proposing construction of the Warp 7 narration improvements. We're finishing up the design this year. We have, we're also working on finishing up the design for the Warp 7 Phase 1 Recycled Water Expansion. And this project is necessary to be able to expand our nonplodable water service area in the Warp 7 area. And it goes hand-in-hand with upgrading the Canal Water Pump Station at Milepost 113.2, which is what provides the canal water to Warp 7 to supplement the recycled water when there's not enough recycled water. We have a Warp 10 Process Optimization Project to... We have a Warp 10 Process Optimization Project to, to help with annual electrical usage and reduce it. Have, we're going to be working on the design of headworks improvements at Warp 10. We are going to be constructing a, a repair to the Warp 10 T1 filter. We have, we are finalizing the design for that project this year. And then we have lift station upgrades. One is at a lift station in Mecca. We have another lift station upgrade here on Cook Street and an electrical inside upgrade at the lift station near Home Depot in La Quinta. We have an extenuation of our program to do sewer manhole rehabilitations in Palm Desert and Rancho Mirage. We are looking at upgrading the micro RTUs, which is the, like, the brains of the, of the lift stations with programmable logic controllers. So, that's an ongoing project. We also have a couple of odor upgrades, odor control upgrades at two lift stations. And then we have, oops, sorry, a sewer rehabilitation pipeline project in Palm Desert and Thousand Palms, where we're addressing sags and cracks in the, in sewer lines. As part of the Section 31, the new Crystal Lagoon or the Disney Community Project out there, we are participating in upsizing some of the sewer pipelines so that we can abandon two lift stations. So, as the development constructs those pipelines, we'll be contributing to upsize them. And then we have our Warp 10 Nonplodable Water Connection Program that we're, we're continuing, and it kind of categorizes it here. We have projects under construction. We have nine projects that we're currently waiting for our final agreement from the State Water Board so that we can initiate construction of those projects next year. And then we have five more under design so that we can apply for the loan and grant financing in December for those projects. And then we have our Warp Seven Nonplodable Water Connections. And those are also, we're waiting on loan grant financing. The two projects that are ready to go are Young's Farmland and Shadow Hills North Golf Course. The other projects, we'll most likely have to wait until we have the capacity upgrade at Warp Seven complete. We have these grant funding projects that I talked about earlier in the East Valley, several trunk sewers. The Monroe Street Trunk Sewer specifically will provide sewer service to the Torres Martinez Tribe Housing Complex on Monroe and Avenue 64. And we're working on just complying with letter of conditions from the, from USDA. So, that one's very close to being finalized and put out to bid and, and getting the final agreement for that. So, that, that wraps up all of the funds. This is just the, the summary. We've already kind of covered all of these points, but I'll just reiterate, our FY '22, our amended budget this year is 139 million. We're proposing 181 million budget for next year. There's nine large CIP projects under construction, two are in stormwater, one is in East Replenishment. There's five nonplodable water projects and one domestic water project. And we will continue to do what we've been doing. We're going to review our expenditures, our budgets, our schedules, continuing to pursue grants, loans, other funding mechanisms for, for the projects. And we're, we're always keeping in mind the target of executing the CIP at or above 70%. And we'll continue with what we've, we started probably a year or a year and a half, maybe two years ago, where we are coming to you for approval prior to advertising a project for bids so that you have some say in whether you want us to move forward with it or not. And then anytime we have a project where we're initiating the design and we're awarding to a design firm, we make sure those are action items so that you can have a presentation on those and that they're not listed on the consent calendar. So, any, any last questions?
Yeah. So, it's, it's dawned on me that the, that the, that the budget, so I, I get the 154 million from last year and why we're at 181. You're basically taking the, the projects that weren't complete this year and taking that money and putting it on this year. Okay, I get it. What I, what I don't get is, is how we haven't, though that 154 million was last year's numbers, right? So, I mean, because of the time we're living in, haven't things gone up 20%? So, in, in essence, I mean, I'm afraid that that 154, that, that 181 is going to be over 200 when we get all these bids in.
Right. So, we'll, we'll have to do is to adjust. I mean, it's an adaptive plan. It's an estimate. And so, we will adjust as we move forward and amend.
So, how do we do that? How do we adjust?
So, we have to check, we, we basically have to take the project to the market to find out what the cost is, whether there's a cost escalation or not. If it costs more to do the project than we estimated, something will have to drop out in order to stay within budget.
Okay.
But, but a lot of-
So, that's, that's the plan? So, so, so we're not gonna?
We can't exceed budget without your authority.
So, the estimate, the projects have been, you know, re-budgeted, re-estimated, and a, a good majority of this budget is the ongoing projects, projects that have been awarded.
That's what's scaring me, that because-
But, but once, once, once the-
When you come to us-
Once the contract is awarded, though, we, we don't, the contractor can't increase prices on us.
I know, but what, what's bothering me is that I already, I already see what's going to happen. So, we have stuff that we've spent a million, say, a million dollars on, and we've got another 5 million to, to spend. That 5 million turns into 7 million, and we're stuck as a board member saying, well, we're already a million into it, we can't stop the project. And, and that's what happens to all these projects.
Well, if-
Because this, this-
It's only that, that's only going to happen if, if it's-
At the time of award.
Yeah, if it's a construction award. So, if, if, if we have, like, we're finishing up design, we're going to put the project out to bid, and we're gonna, we have a, you know, a new estimate for next year for what it's going to cost to construct. So-
Because none of these numbers are going to hit that, what you budgeted, because these were last year's numbers.
No, we've updated, we've, we've, we've relooked at all of the numbers as part of the 181 million.
Because it doesn't seem like that when you guys are showing me the same number that we had last year.
So, he's going to the same total bottom line.
Yeah.
And what you're probably saying is that the project mix is different because we've re-estimated to stay within that same number.
Okay.
Okay, so we're already beginning to adapt. It's, it's an adaptive plan.
Yeah.
So, there are projects that were previously proposed in the budget last year or, or for 2023 that have been taken out in anticipation for-
Higher costs.
Higher costs. Okay, that's what I, that's what I was trying to-
Okay, sorry, I didn't quite understand.
You explained it perfect, thank you. Okay.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay.
So, we do have a little bit more-
Carrie, up.
Go ahead, sir.
Okay, hey, thanks. So, Carrie, just to get back to that execution rate, if you could go back to that last slide you had up on the screen there?
Which, this one? Or?
Yeah, that one right there.
Okay.
So, the execution rate is 88% of 139 million?
Yes.
So, if you add the 26 million back to that 139 million?
Yeah.
I think you'd get, I think you'd get about a 74% execution rate if I, if my math is right. So, wouldn't you use that number instead of the 88?
So, it's been my policy to make sure that the engineering staff is managing their projects, and I want any budget amendments to be submitted before the end of the third quarter, before the end of March, so that finance has the opportunity to look at those unspent dollars and accommodate that, along with the work, into the budget moving forward. What I don't, what was happening is we were making budget amendments at the, almost at the end of the fiscal year, which allowed no time at all for those changed conditions to be incorporated into the following year budget. Unless you had something else you wanted to say.
Yeah, no, that's reasonable, Jim. I think that, I think that, that, that's good policy, what you had to say.
Yeah, I mean, it'd be great if we could do it at mid-year review, but we don't always have enough data to, to forecast accurately at mid-year. I mean, it's still just an estimate.
So, so Peter, maybe what you're getting at is that the, the real execution rate based on the approved budget that happened before we did the adjustments?
Still over 70?
Seventy, no, I know, but the point would be if you're at 181 million and, and, and we expect to do 74 again, then there's potentially 40 million, or whatever the number is, 40 million that won't get spent this year out of this budget. You know what I'm saying? I mean, is that, is that, what was that, your point, Peter? I don't know.
Yeah, the point is that when we go into ratemaking, you know, we use that capital improvement budget as our capital improvement project budget as, you know, it's a five-year outlook. And if we're, if we're going to consistently run 26 million dollars, you know, you know, just carrying over, like we said, we're just going to roll it over, then, then we're really overestimating what our, what our true capital improvement project budget is. And so, you know, in terms of ratemaking in future years, I think that needs to be recognized that we're only really getting about a 74% execution rate on, on what the budget is, not what the amended budget is, but what the budget is. So, so, you know, we just have to be aware of that.
If you look at the second or the third slide, you can see that the, the biggest amendment was in stormwater. So, domestic water and sanitation had really a very small amendment. So, the issue with stormwater was these very large projects that we awarded this, over the last couple of years, and those getting started. So, when we're estimating these projects in March or April of, of one year, and we're thinking that they're going to get started in the fall and they don't get started until the spring, you know, if there's, that, we're, we're not, we're not estimating a 26 million shortfall every year because we're not going to have these large, you know, 88 million, 110 million dollar projects every year. But, I mean, that's what we're talking about. The, it's the stormwater projects that were the biggest amendment to this budget this year.
I don't want to sound like a broken record, but, you know, last year, we also had the spike in COVID, so there was a workforce issue problem, so a lot of the work in place got delayed. So, I mean, there, it wasn't necessarily a standard year for us to have great accuracy in how we projected. I thought, I thought we staff did an excellent job in getting the work done that was delivered, and we still are above the 70%. Now, whether that's an overestimation or an underestimation, the money that we plan to spend stays in the program to be spent the following year. So, what we are always trying to look for is are there opportunities so that we can optimize the operations to avoid the rate increases that we advertised? I mean, we also feel it's a success if we can come to the board and say, the rates that you approved on the 218 are not necessarily the rates we need. You know, we're doing everything we can to do that. We're not trying to game the system, but there are things beyond our control that come up, and so-
Yeah, so I haven't, I haven't, I haven't made the assertion that you game the system. I am just trying to provide con, a discussion of context so that when we do go to those, the, the next ratemaking sessions is that we have, so we've had, had discussions like this, and we know that COVID has impacted the ability to do some projects. And I think that Carrie provided some great background information that it's these big flood control projects that are impacting that about 15% of execution rate. So, I, you know, I think it's the discussion that we have to have and not just gloss over it, and so we can make better decisions when we're, when, when either someone is saying, well, your execution rate is too low, or your, or, or the budget's too high, then we've had some background context of, you know, how it's all working and what the policies are. And so, I, so I appreciate the discussion and answering to my questions.
Understood, sir.
Thanks, thanks.
Okay.
All right.
So, finance has a few slides?
Oh, yeah, okay, go.
So, I'm going to turn it-
Quickly, I'm, I'm going to be heading out in a minute.
Over to them.
Hi, Carrie.
Hello.
Carrie with a K.
I'll try to do it quick. So, this slide pretty much just shows what Carrie has gone over, but it's a little bit more broken down, but how we're funding the, the CIP projects budgeted. So, it kind of compares again. It shows what was previously forecasted and what it is now and the difference of the 26.6 million. So, it's just broken down by fund-
Okay.
And kind of shows where the funding sources are. So, I'll kind of go on to the next slide if you don't have any questions on this one. So, this question, this, this discussion is really more of what we look at. So, when we get the CIP project, engineering does provide us a five-year plan. It's a moving five-year plan each year. And so, when we look at these budgets, we definitely, as, as you know, we are aggressively pursuing federal funding and state grants through various ways, grant funding and also earmark funds. That's our priority. And as much as possible, we try to get those monies and then resort to loans or bond financing if we have to, because we have to complete these projects. So, if we do have to do a loan or a bond financing, we do go into an extensive analysis of our borrowing capacity to make sure all the bullet items that's on this slide is met. So, we went through, we go through that process. We went through recently with the stormwater. We kind of talked about that last, the last meeting where we had to finance the 60 million for the stormwater. And then we recently did it for domestic, and we're doing it for all the other funds as well as we go through. So, part of the discussion that was brought up is, you know, how do you know about the, the rate increases? So, we do look at a five-year plan. We do have a modeling that we kind of look at to make sure that we can afford to borrow money. So, I'll go on to the, trying to, please stop me if I'm going too fast. So, the next few slides is just talking about proposing to keep the rate that was approved on Prop 218. So, for the domestic water, the proposal was to increase it by about 5%. And this still follows, it will meet our cash flow or our debt coverage or reserve targets, because the increase for the domestic is again, just mostly based on moving that money that was not spent in the current fiscal year to the next fiscal year. So, the total overall budget target for the CIP plan for domestic holds. We've also gone through and looked at our fiscal 2023 operating budget. And again, it is still holding at the same, up close to the same amount that we budgeted on the forecast. So, the plan is to bring back the fiscal 2023, the end of April, April 19th for a study session. But we kind of broke it down by fund right here. So, the domestic water, again, is 5% is holding. The canal is a 2.6 increase. That is going to be held out all the way to 2024. Again, most of the increases that we have proposed is to keep our reserves on target and- and also to keep our OpEx covered, our operating expenses covered. The sanitation is at eight and a half percent. Again, same thing, the, 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 the increase is not related to any CIP, so there's no proposal to get more than the rate what that's proposed. Stormwater, of course, that's, that's a property tax, so there's no increase on that one. The wastewater and the east wastewater replenishment, so those are the 20% increase, again, the bro, what we talked about last year. It is mostly related to the, the state water project cost that was going to be recovered through the West so that we can limit the, the tax increase to a penny back in, in the current fiscal year. And also the east wastewater replenishment increases at nine and a half. And then again, there's no increase on this one because the increase of two and a half is really just the East Oasis, the Oasis bond financing. So we kind of look at all the numbers, we put in all the modeling, we make sure that, that that service is covered. Even though there's increase in the CIPs, the change is mostly because we're getting more grants funding for them. So I kind of went fast. I wasn't, I'm trying to be conscious of your time.
Yeah, yeah.
If you have any specific questions.
I think it's important to point out to the board that we will have another study session on the overall budget on the 19th of April, and then we bring back to the board on the, during the regular board meeting on the 26th.
26, that's correct. And we're also coming back on the 12 to do an amendment on the current fiscal year budget.
Okay. Oh, yeah, good.
Are we looking, are we looking to discuss that east wastewater replenishment increase with the Advisory Committee? I think it's next week.
Tomorrow. It's tomorrow.
Tomorrow, yeah.
We will certainly listen to their input.
Yeah.
Yeah, tomorrow.
Of course, I won't be on there.
I mean, that's, that is the purpose of that committee meeting, is to forecast what the East Valley rack will be.
Very good. Unfortunately, I have a conflict at hours, so I may use that. That's already on the schedule though, right, Jim?
Yes.
On the schedule. All right, well, good. I need to run.
Okay.
Carrie, is there one more? No, that's, that's it, right?
That's the last slide.
Yeah, good.
There's no other questions?
No, I do appreciate the information. I, I think that that adjusting before we, you know, this March adjustment is really smart, because then it gets you to a good starting point for the New Year's budget, right?
Hopefully.
Or, or at least a better starting point, more accurate.
If I could, just for the board members that were curious about tomorrow, it is a Zoom meeting starting at nine o'clock. The Joint Water Policy Advisory Committee.
Yes. Good. Well, with no further business, we are adjourned, and thank you for the presentations, Carrie and Carrie.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
I'm on time.
Bye.